I'd like to call and order the meeting of the Village Board for November 16th, 2021. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Village Clerk, would you please call the roll?
President DeSimone?
Here.
Trustee Carmona?
Here.
Trustee Frye?
Here.
Trustee Lomax?
Here.
Trustee Perez?
Here.
That's five.
We will now move to the public hearing to discuss the 2022 annual budget. Village Clerk, would you please call the roll to open the public hearing to discuss the 2022 budget?
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's four.
Will the Village Manager or Finance Director like to discuss the budget?
Ms. McVanez? Um, we had a budget workshop, uh, a few weeks ago for the budget. This particular budget is very similar. There were just a few changes.
The changes, oh, see, I never need that. The changes are comprised of mostly, uh, there was an additional revenue from our SMG contract for about $98,000. Then we made an adjustment on the police pension for the new officer that wasn't done before. We put in some money for retention and training programs because we're recently getting a lot of turnover and we wanted to figure out how to retain the employees over the next year. So pretty much anything that came in the additional revenue was put back in the budget, but most of the changes are minor.
If any person would like to speak on the 2022 annual budget, I ask that they please approach the podium and state your name and comment. Seeing none? Any online public comments?
There are no online public comments.
This would conclude the public comment on the 2022 annual budget. Is there any further discussion on the 2022 annual budget?
I just want to say thank you to the finance staff as well as the department heads and the managers and supervisors for all contributing their time, energy, and effort over the last about six months putting this together.
There are a motion to, uh, close the public hearing on the 2022 annual budget. You have a motion? You have a second?
Second.
Any discussion from the board? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola? Oh, sorry. Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's four.
Motion carries. Public hearing is closed. We will proceed with the regular order of business on the Village Management Meeting agenda. We will now proceed with the presentat- oh, sorry. Can you guys hear me now? We will now proceed with the presentation of the Public Works Employee Recognition Proclamations. I believe Public Works Director Joe Crotchy will be presenting the proclamation. Mr. Crotchy, would you like to begin?
Thank you very much. It's with great pleasure that I have the opportunity tonight to acknowledge two individuals that have served the residents of the Village of Bensonville for over 52 combined years. John Izuski and Rich Zap have spent their careers working in the village's Streets and Forestry Divisions of Public Works. Tonight, we're going to recognize these two and congratulate them on their retirements. So I'll start with Rich. Rich started his employment with the village on August 22nd, 1994. Throughout his career, Rich worked within the Streets Division and served as our concrete guru. To many, a five-foot by five-foot concrete square is just that, a square of concrete. But to Rich, it was more of a canvas. Whether it was a standard broom finish or the dreaded California finish, Rich put his figurative stamp on every square of sidewalk here in town. The quality of his edges, the pitch of the drainage, the consistency of the material were all second to none. Quality over quantity, right, Rich? Rich was also a very talented carpenter. Over his career, there were many special projects that Rich put his signature on, including the design and installation of the village's mailbox system down here at Village Hall. The construction of the Bensonville Studio in the basement of Village Hall was one of Rich's projects and taking the lead on the bocce ball court, uh, reconstruction over at Redmond. Rich left an everlasting mark on the department and the village that will be remembered and appreciated for years. Rich's official retirement date was yesterday, uh, November 15th, which also served as his 66th birthday. So again, happy birthday to you, Rich. In his retirement, Rich plans to spend more time with his wife Deb and his family, working on projects around the house and also going fishing. So we wish him well, and I will now read his proclamation. Proclamation of the Village of Bensonville honoring Rich Zap for 27 years of service. Whereas Rich Zap first began his employment with the Village of Bensonville Public Works Department on August 22nd, 1994. And whereas during his tenure of his employment, Rich has served mostly in the Streets Division of Public Works. And whereas Rich Zap has distinguished himself as a hardworking and dedicated public servant, at all times committed to helping the Bensonville community. And whereas Rich Zap has built cooperative relationships with residents, vendors, contractors, engineers, and other members of the community. And whereas his colleagues know him as a steady, dependable coworker, a leader and a friend who takes pride in his work and in the community and who also is ready to lend moral support or a helping hand when needed. And whereas Rich Zap officially retired from the Village of Bensonville on November 15th, 2021. Now therefore Frank DeSimone, Village President, and the Board of Trustees honor Rich Zap and recognize and commend Rich for his 27 years of dedicated service to the citizens of Bensonville and extend sincere best wishes for a joyful retirement. No, hey, hey. We found, we found that earlier. The one I noticed is wrong. Not pensionable. Yeah, we'll take pictures for you.
I have lots of projects. Ross me.
You guys can take the mask off if you'd like to.
Oh, I think that would be a nice.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You have 15 seconds, I believe, to close. All right, now on, now on to John Izuski. John started his employment with the village as a seasonal employee back in July of 1997. After a few months of impressing his supervisor, John was offered a full-time position in October of 1997. John performed many roles as a maintenance technician in his first 20-plus years with the Streets and Forestry Divisions. Most notably, John became our lead street sweeper, spending many of his days out on the streets of the old acquisition area, trying his best to keep it clean. John was a rather quiet and dependable worker for much of his career. He had a knack to never be at the forefront of an issue, good or bad, always being quietly in the background. During a reorganization within the Public Works Department in 2018, I approached John with an opportunity to lead the Streets and Forestry Division as their supervisor. After many weeks of hemming and hawing and trying every possible way not to accept this offer, I finally convinced John that this would be a great opportunity for him. He finally accepted and has served admirably in this capacity ever since. There's two things I want to mention about John tonight. First of all, he really must be commended for, um, his commitment to the village's snow and ice management program. John took over that project and that responsibility in 2018 and has done an exceptional job over the past few years, making sure that all of our streets were safe to travel. I thank you and the residents of Bensonville thank you for that commitment. Second, I was going to allow John to, the opportunity to kind of speak tonight, but in the interest of time, I thought against it. For all these, all those who know John, he can be quite long-winded. There's many times I had to stop his conversation midstream just to keep a meeting at or below an hour, sometimes two. So I'm going to have to, I'm going to miss cutting you off. I'm going to miss your conversations, but we wish you the best. John's official retirement date was October 22nd of this year. Similar to Rich, John is planning to spend time with his, his wife Diana. Not Rich's wife. And the rest of his family, and you never know. Uh, he's going to spend a lot of time fishing up at his family's cabin and also taking care of his growing honeydew list as well. So I will now read John's proclamation. Proclamation honoring John Izuski for 25 years of service. Whereas John Izuski first began his employment with the Village of Bensonville Public Works Department as a seasonal employee in July of 1997, after a few months, he was offered a full-time position and began his full-time career with Bensonville on October 1st, 1997. John worked for five and a half years before leaving for other opportunities, but quickly returned in November of 2004 and would spend the rest of his career working for Public Works. And whereas during this tenure of employment, John has served mostly in the Forestry and Streets Divisions before being recognized for his efforts and offered a promotion to Streets and Forestry Supervisor in August of 2018. And whereas John Izuski has distinguished himself as a hardworking and dedicated public servant, at all times committed to helping the Bensonville community. And whereas John Izuski has built cooperative relationships with residents, vendors, contractors, engineers, and other members of the community. And whereas his colleagues know him as a steady, dependable coworker, a leader and a friend who always takes pride in his work and the community and who's always ready to lend moral support or a helping hand when needed. And whereas John Izuski officially retired from the Village of Bensonville on October 22nd, 2021. Now therefore Frank DeSimone, Village President, and the Board of Trustees honor John Izuski and recognize and commend John for his 25 years of dedicated service to the citizens of Bensonville and extend sincere best wishes for a joyful retirement.
These gentlemen are leaving behind big shoes to fill. We're doing our best to hire young guys and fill them, but it's a, it's an uphill battle on that. So thanks for your service, guys. All right, thank you.
At this time, we will move to public comment. Does anyone wish to address the board? If so, please approach the podium and state your name.
Yes, we have two. Uh, Mr. Paul DeMichael?
I am Paul DeMichael. I live at 17W 275 Rodak Lane. I'm talking tonight about CDC meetings. I have attended CDC meetings for three years now. It's not that I enjoy doing this kind of thing, but there's nothing on television those evenings. I, last meeting I was at, um, it kind of struck me, uh, what was going on. They published these nice handouts at the start of the meeting describing the case and the things. It's all put together, uh, but it has comments in it, um, that are, I believe are judgmental. I'll read this. "No special use permit to allow an increase in outdoor storage has been granted since 2019." Okay. "Staff is often hesitant to recommend approval requests for the ongoing issue with outdoor storage seen in the industrial district. They are often cluttered and impeded on site vehicle traffic. You don't know if this applies to this subject property or just every property in town. The subject lot is just under one acre. It does not appear that there's a need for the property to offer an outdoor storage area of this size." They made a decision for the owners. What's troubling is no one put their initials on this or their name, so you don't know who made the recommendation. And the hard facts are, this hearing was over before it even started. So why bring the public up, go through the things and that when it's already been decided they're going to be denied? I, I believe it's coming time for a third-party review of how this system works.
Thank you.
The next person is Nancy?
Mariani.
Oh, Mariani, thank you.
Yes, um.
You go to the podium to speak, please.
Yeah, I understand, but before I do that, I'd like the opportunity to provide the board with photos that I will be discussing.
Okay.
So if you could just hand me.
Yeah, I can do that for you.
Thanks. There's one side.
We only have three minutes.
So regarding the special use permit for outdoor storage, tonight I'd like to discuss and address concerns for the denial of this permit that were made on November 2nd with the CDC and reasons why it should be approved. I'm going to try to talk really fast. Prior to the CDC hearing, I received a staff report which recommended the denial of the permit based on its approval standards, number one. It didn't meet the standard for public welfare. And number five, it wasn't consistent with title and plan. During that meeting, nothing was explained. I would like to make it clear that the staff denied the recommendation before the hearing even started and the recommendation to deny was not explained nor were any valid reasons given for denial. One of the staff members stated that it was denied because the yard, which my father has behind the building at 600 South County Line Road and has had it for over 20 years, would end up looking like a junkyard, disheveled and unorderly. This is quite an assumption on behalf of the staff. My father has always maintained his building since he started his concrete company in 1983 and it was always in impeccable condition. I have the photos to prove it. I would like to make it clear. I'm sorry, I urge you to look at the pictures I have given you. There are four photos of my father's yard in its entirety and there is a set of photos of 620 South County Line Road, the house next to my father's building. Clearly you can see which photo and which building looks like a junkyard. My father's yard has always been impeccably maintained since he built the building over 20 years ago. I'm not even sure if any member of the staff had stopped by to look at my dad's building. Since he retired, the yard has only had a shed and a bobcat, which have both since been removed since his passing in February. Currently, we have rented the yard, um, space to a tenant with a trucking company. It's only used for semi trucks and parking for three or four vehicles max. The, this multi-industrial building has four office spaces, two warehouses and the yard. In an effort to earn rental income, it is necessary that we rent the entire building, which includes approximately 17,500 square feet of yard space, not including the concrete that he poured behind the overhead doors. If the special use permit is not approved, we would only be able to rent out 25% of the yard, which equals roughly only 404, 4,400 square feet. In addition, we are told the gravel in the yard must be paved. The cost to asphalt the entire yard is approximately $60,000. Currently, we have rented the yard.
I'll let you finish. Take your time.
Thanks. I'm just trying to get through it. We have rented the yard, um, the space to a tenant with a trucking company. Gosh. Okay. The cost to, um, pave the yard would be 60,000. If the special use permit is not approved or waived, we will not see a return on this investment. And it would be ludicrous for us to spend this amount of money on a yard that will not be rentable in its entirety. We wouldn't be making money. We would be losing money. We need a profit, just as every other striving business in Bensonville and everywhere does, not a loss. I would also like to bring to your attention a few locations in Bensonville that are using their property for storage on gravel. These properties have not been paved and I'm sure there are more out there. 620 South County Line Road, John Favuzzi, I've provided you photos of his yard. It is very unsightly. There's miscellaneous equipment, numerous trucks and vehicles and garbage. Tom and Toe Towing at 1322 Irving Park Road, there is gravel. And there are space, they do rent their spaces to vehicles. Vian Construction on John Street off of County Line Road, there are materials and loads of gravel, including machinery. Their entire yard is used for storage. All of these businesses are in excess of 25% storage usage and have not complied with replacing gravel with pavement. My father has always been in compliance with all of the ordinances and laws. He knows Frank. He has talked to some people on the staff. I'm sure you know of him. He was not happy with the ordinance that he can only use 25% since he's been there for a really long time. A denial of the special use permit denies us from earning rental income and unlawfully places our business in harm of financial distress. We simply can't afford to pave the yard if the special use permit is not approved. Or I recommend waiving the pavement requirement. Finally, I would like this case remanded back to the CDC if approval is not granted. I don't feel that the hearing was fair. On November 2nd, um, it was denied before any explanations were given as to why it should be, um, be approved. One of the, the reasons I remember someone on staff had said that it would just end up unorderly. And again, I'm going to say that's a huge assumption.
So we'll take a look at those, uh, three properties that you mentioned. Just to, so everyone understands and the board understands. We do have paid staff that are professionals that we do ask for their opinion. So when we do, they do make a recommendation to the CDC, that's because they've looked into this, this is their job. So I, I do take a little affront to, why are they doing this? Well, that's because we're paying them to do that.
We could talk about this when, when we bring it up in the, in the regular board meeting, correct?
That's fine.
The next person up is Trisha, Trisha Sultan?
Sutton.
Sutton, I'm sorry.
Okay, so CDC is the hot topic of the night. I also attended the November 2nd hearing for requesting our fence along the side of our house, though it does extend it past the foundation. And we've requested to install this attractive five-foot ductile aluminum fence on our eastern side of our property to deal with chronic and increasing trespass issues, including the liability of people coming down that slope very quickly, especially kids on scooters, bikes, everything, sometimes at very high speed. And putting them at risk because it's very sloped. The fence, while it extends into the, ahead of the foundation, does not extend in front of any of the building. It is, it is very attractive and will not be in front of that. We're actually doing this to improve safety as well as manage our liability because of the way people trap, go through there on the area with steep slopes. At the CDC hearing two weeks ago, staff brought up something which had not been brought up before, which was an alternative for installing landscaping along that section, which we had not heard about before and had been given no chance to look into it. We've quickly investigated that option and we have found that that option will be less effective in reducing our issue, our trespass and the public's risk of injury. It will not manage it well. It will interfere and cause a much less open line of sight than our decorative aluminum fence will cause. And it's also going to cost us an additional beyond what we're paying for the fence in the back part of the yard. It's going to cost us an additional $2,700 to $3,000. And what we had to do was not consider, doing that is an undue hardship on our part. We did not anticipate that much additional expense for this. And, and it is noting that in another case that was offered for approval was, was one where somebody had violated their permit and installed the fence on the side and yet it was undue hardship for them to have to remove that, pay to remove the fence that was in violation. But for us, because we're putting up a decorative fence that doesn't interfere with any lines of sight and is beautiful and takes care of our issue, that was not considered undue hardship. It was also brought up that the land adjacent to us is technically a vacant lot, which the Park District has been maintaining. It is floodplain. It's not buildable. We've observed significant flooding in the last 12 years that we've lived there. It, building on that land would require a much more significant variation than what we're requesting, so our fence would not interfere with that land use. It's very unlikely it would ever be residential. Also, because the land has been vacant for so long and is adjacent to the parkland, the public and the Park District have considered it as part of the park and they continue to do so. The public will continue to attempt to take the shortcut across our driveway and then our lawn, down the steep slope, um, despite installing expensive landscaping and shrubbery. And that also means that when they try that, they're at high risk of damaging the stuff that we just spent a lot of money to put in. We do believe our variance request is reasonable. It achieves the intent of, of the regulations. It encourages a consistent character of the area. It does not go in front of any of the buildings and it improves public safety while allowing us to manage our trespass and liability issues effectively. We respectfully request that the village actually approve our variation request instead of as, instead of denying it as the CDC recommended. I, I too thought that some of the ways that things were handled, as the first speaker mentioned, things were not very transparent and things could be, um, could be looked into in terms of having criteria more clear and things like that. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's only here.
Online public comment?
There are no online public comments.
This would conclude public comment. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the October 26th, 2021 Village Board meeting?
So moved.
There's a second?
Second.
Any modifications to the minutes? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's four.
Motion carries. Minutes are approved. The next item of business is to approve the warrant in the amount of $1,355,284.23. Is there a motion to approve the warrant?
So moved.
There's a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the warrant? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's four.
Motion carries and the warrant is approved. There are no items on the consent agenda. Under administration ordinance of the Village of Bensonville, DuPage and Cook County, Illinois, Cook Counties, Illinois, amending section 4-3-38 of chapter three of title four on the method of Village Code to increase the video gaming terminal fee. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
You have a motion.
You have a second?
You have a second.
Being a motion, a second, who has the discussion?
I will take this one. Um, this is a initiative that the village fought very hard in Springfield on. This is actually a compromise. Right now, non-home rule municipalities are allowed to charge $1,000 per video gaming terminal. Sorry, home rule municipalities are allowed to charge $1,000 per terminal. Non-home rule had previously been at only $25, so there was a pretty big inequity there. We advocated for trying to just lift that and move it to what the home rule communities get, up to 1,000. Springfield did what Springfield does and they compromised at $250 per terminal. So the state law has, the governor signed that legislation allowing us to, uh, license them up to $250. We have 69 terminals in town and so we would just like to raise that fee to put it more in line with the actual cost it takes to administer that program.
Any questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's four.
Motion carries and ordinance is passed. Under Committee on Economic Development ordinance granting a variation to allow the paved parking area non-adjacent to the garage at 151 South Addison, is there a motion to approve this ordinance? You have a motion? There was a second?
Second.
Being a motion, a second, do we have discussion? Scott?
Yeah, 151 South Addison, just right over here, south of, of Green Street. It is a R3 single-family district, a two-unit building on that, that property. Newer owners of that property. Were parking on the gravel. They were issued a correction notice. I came in to pave two, what I'll call a parking pad, two satellite parking areas, one adjacent to the existing garage, one remote. Both of those scenarios would require variation for different reasons, but what, what the staff recommended was to deny the, uh, parking area next to the garage, north of the existing garage, and recommend approval of, of actually the larger parking area, kind of. and recommend approval of, actually the larger parking area kind of on the, the south side. This, this is an odd, unique-shaped lot where it has a good old-fashioned Lake Shore Drive S-curve on the alley. And after looking at it, it was determined that that would be a safer spot for the cars to park. So the staff did recommend approval of the variation for the parking area, not abutting in the garage and slightly larger than the twenty by twenty allowed, twenty-two and a half by twenty-eight and a half to include some existing pavement that's back there. The CDC did have their public hearing and agreed with the staff recommendation to recommend approval of that variation I just recounted.
Any questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's four.
Motion carries, ordinance is passed. Ordinance granting a variation to allow a fence in the corner side yard of four hundred Spruce Avenue. Is there a motion to approve this ordinance?
You have a motion?
There was a second.
Second.
Being a motion and a second, do we have discussion?
This is the newer home that was erected at the northwest corner of Stonem and Spruce in the northwest part of town. They were issued a permit to construct a six-foot solid PVC fence. A six-foot solid PVC fence in the, in the rear and interior side yard. When it was erected, it was found that the fence did encroach into the corner side yard, which is, is regulated as a front yard and not, not, not permitted. They did seek the variation to retain the fence in that location. The CDC did agree with that request to allow the fence to stay in that location, but did have the condition that, as we have in corner side yards, that the top one foot of the six-foot fence be lattice, it was a public safety issue. And that was approved, I want to say unanimously, yes, it was approved unanimously to allow the fence to remain, there was discussion on the lattice work, but ultimately that condition was included. So the recommendation this evening is to allow the fence to remain in the corner side yard, but have the one-foot lattice at the top.
Questions from the board? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's four.
Motion carries and ordinance is passed. Number three, ordinance denying a variation to allow an increase in maximum allowable sign height and granting a variation to allow an electric message sign at twelve oh one through twelve twenty-one West Irving Park Road. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
You have a motion?
There was a second.
Second.
Being a motion and a second, Scott, discussion, please.
This is the Plaza eighty-three retail center at Spruce, pardon me, Spruce at Irving Park Road. We actually saw this variation in twenty-twenty and it was recommended for approval. The, the work was never completed and the code allows a year for that to happen or else the approval is nullified. That in fact what happened here. The petitioner came back and said, that fence I wanted, or excuse me, the fence, the sign I was looking to do two years ago almost, I'd like to do again. There's an existing twelve-foot tall sign there, they're requesting the EMC, the, the code requires a variation if it's near another EMC, you'll see in the staff report, there's eight along Irving Park Road. And so that, that variation is necessary to have the EMC at all. The existing sign is twelve feet high, the proposed sign is just a hair more than eight feet, which is our maximum. The CDC did recommend approval of the variation to allow the electric message center or EMC sign, but did not recommend approval of the variation in height, which the petitioner agreed to lower the, the sign down to the eight feet. So as I said, that was the unanimous recommendation of the CDC at their November second public hearing.
Any questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's four.
Motion carries, ordinance is passed. Number four is an ordinance denying variation to allow a fence in the front yard of four twenty-four Diana Court. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
You have a motion?
There was a second.
Second.
Being a motion and a second, Scott, discussion?
This is, of course, the, the fence request that Ms. Sutton referred to in her public comment. It is a single-family home on the north side of Diana, one, I'll say one lot west of Creekside Park. Front yard fences are prohibited by our code. The petition that was submitted did show that the fence would come out in front of the home and staff had recommended denial of that. The CDC, after their public hearing on the second of October, agreed with that recommendation. And the motion to approve the variation for the front yard fence failed one to four. So that comes as a recommendation from the CDC for denial.
Is there any way to work with the homeowner on some kind of options? If we have her sit down and meet with the village manager and yourself?
We, we could certainly do that, absolutely. I can't, you know, at the, at the risk of getting into whatever, I, I can't recall a lot of front yard fences that were approved. This is somewhat of a unique situation.
I'm not saying a front fence per se, but maybe some kind of, let's research it a little bit.
We certainly would be willing to discuss and work with that, absolutely.
So ma'am, we're going to vote on denying it at this time, but we're going to set up a meeting with the village manager and Mr. Weiger in the near future to discuss, is that okay? Okay.
Scott, can you reach out to Mrs. Sutton tomorrow?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right, so where was I? There's a motion and a second, we have discussion, any discussion from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
Yeah, that's four.
Motion carries, ordinance is passed. Number five is an ordinance denying a special use permit to outdoor storage in excess of twenty-five percent at six hundred South County Line Road. Is there a motion to approve this ordinance?
You have a motion?
There was a second.
Second.
Being a motion and a second, Scott, can I have some discussion on this one, please?
Well, as we, as you know, we heard Ms. Mariani, we all recall John fondly. And, I got the wrong page here, my mistake. Pardon? Oh, Joe. Well, we like John too. I should say we are in court with John, by the way. Anyway, so six hundred County Line Road, the request came in for paving the, the rear property up to fifty-nine percent of the, of the approximately one acre site, pardon me. The code, as you know, allows twenty-five percent maximum. There was conversation about how many trucks are requested to be parked, my recollection is it was six. And then the staff had said, you know, we can park those six trucks and be under that twenty-five percent maximum. And there'd be no variation, no special use, we could just issue the permit. So the public hearing went on, there was no striping plan submitted as requested. So the fifty-nine percent was what was debated, if you will. The staff had recommended against that. I should say that paving of gravel parking is a property maintenance issue, which is not subject to existing non-conformities under the code. So the staff had recommended denial for two reasons. One, of course, as we said, it is not existing non-conforming use, it's a property maintenance issue. And also that, based on the information we had with the number of vehicles that were requested to be parked and the lack of a, a striping plan submitted, that we, this plan we prepared with the help of our GPS consultant could be done without the need of a special use. So we did recommend denial, the CDC did agree with that recommendation unanimously five to nothing. And that's the, the recommendation here tonight.
Okay, so what I'm hearing on this is twenty-five percent is not good enough for you guys, right?
No, it's not.
Okay.
Since my father has been there for over twenty years, he is grandfathered in. And he never had an issue before there was an ordinance that was placed. And that's very vulnerable and it's very lucrative. That entire street.
I understand that part of it.
On the line road is all semi-trucks and that's, you know, it's been vacant for so long, we have such a hard time getting it.
I understand that. What businesses are in the building now?
There's, well, that's the freight company. There's one guy that's storing a vehicle in one of the warehouses. Another company is a repair, a time clock repair. And that's in one of our warehouses. And then Strong One Freight is also using two offices, so they're occupying two offices. But the main reason though, Frank, is because they're insisting that we pave the yard. Why would we spend sixty thousand if we're not going to get rental income and if we're not going to see a return? And if we can only put twenty-five, if we're only allowed twenty-five percent storage?
Yeah, but you're saying there's six trucks, but you're saying you're storing six trucks on the lot, right?
Well, it's, it varies, sometimes it's less than that.
Okay, but, okay, maximum of six?
Yeah, I mean, they come and go.
These pictures show well more than six on that lot.
On that day, there were, yes, but it's not always that many.
So if, if twenty-five percent of the lot holds six trucks, I mean, I know how much truck storage parking is and, and actually it's frowned upon in the village, just truck storage parking.
They don't know that they're going to renew their lease. And if they don't, if there's another company that wants to rent, and I have to say, well, you can only use twenty-five percent.
Right, I mean, unfortunately.
And then we will not pave it. We can't afford sixty thousand to pave it if we're not going to be able to use the areas that are paved. And right now, we've had no issues with the gravel. I mean, if you look at the pictures, it looks very neat.
But the paving issue and the zoning issue are two separate incidents, okay?
Okay, they may be, but to me, they're kind of related. Who does not pave it, is that fine? If it's not paved? No, we're asking, I'm asking if they could waive it. It's a lot of money.
So gravel's not an approved surface, so that's where the paving thing comes in and that's what Scott mentioned, it's a property maintenance issue. So we're seeing this with residents who have gravel on their driveways and businesses who have gravel, it all needs to be paved.
And, and I know you showed me all, all these other pictures too, I mean, these guys are in court. Unfortunately, the DuPage County court system and all this takes forever to get resolved.
There's a number of businesses.
I agree with you.
John, it's not only Tomato, you know, or Vian, I mean, it's so many. And, I mean, if you compare the gravel to my father's gravel, he was a concrete contractor, so he kind of knew, you know, how to keep up.
I, I under.
There's no seepage, there's no water drainage.
Just because, I understand that, but just because they have that now, doesn't make it right, and you're absolutely right. And now we need to address that situation.
Yeah, I don't.
But just because we have that now, doesn't mean that we have to change it and make you get fifty-nine or sixty percent of the lot paved. It doesn't conform with our ordinance. So now, if you conform with the ordinance at the twenty-five percent and these other people now have to conform with that ordinance, that's how we make it right, not, not allowing one wrong to make three rights. You know what I'm saying? So with it being twenty-five percent and you're, and you could keep six trucks on it, and I know how much they pay because there's not a day that goes by that somebody doesn't call and wants to buy ten buildings just to park trucks on it. I, I, I understand that, I understand, I understand it's lucrative, I get it.
What issues you're going to have with any, with any time. I mean, it doesn't mean the reasons you need to stay there, I still don't agree. And I don't agree with the reasons CDC gave me. And like I said, my father has been there for, I mean, there should be exceptions made. They've been more than twenty years.
All right, we're going to vote on this, so. So the ordinance is to deny access of twenty-five percent, which is our ordinance of paving. So we have a motion and a second, any discussion from the board?
Just one note for the board, the twenty-five percent, it sounds small for you. Compared to our surrounding neighbors, that's, that's a lucrative amount, many towns don't, don't allow anywhere near that. So that's kind of the compromise that we've struck with our business community.
Any other questions? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's four.
Motion carries and ordinance is passed. Number six is an ordinance authorizing the acquisition of a parcel commonly known as eight hundred West Irving Park Road for corporate purposes. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
You have a motion?
There was a second.
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 There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
Mr. Montana or Mr. Weiger, who wants to handle this? Because I know in the last week it's been mostly Mr. Montana. Do you want to run through the terms of the PSA?
Sure. The village is acquiring a parcel at eight hundred West Irving Park Road. It is the former Cascade banquet hall. The village is paying one point one million dollars for the property. The village is buying the property in its, as its condition for future development. It is being paid for out of TIF twelve funds, which, which is a eligible redevelopment project cost for the area. The village intends on seeking developers and acquiring proposals in order to revamp and reutilize the property to a better use.
We've conducted some due diligence already with an appraisal as well as a phase one. Phase one has come up with nothing thus far and the appraisal is above what we are paying for, so we're getting a good deal on this property. We don't have an identified end user, we're going to, once we acquire it, we'll work to do that, but we want to control the end use of it ultimately.
Any questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's four.
Motion carries, ordinance is passed. Finance ordinance adopting the annual budget for the Village of Benciville for fiscal year commencing January one, twenty twenty-two and ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
You have a motion?
We have a second on the motion.
Second.
Being a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
This is the final stop for our budget, twenty twenty-two budget. We've had the workshop, we had the public hearing today. This is the ordinance to approve seventy-six million, seventy-nine thousand and nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars worth of spending, of which thirty-nine million is for investments in new infrastructure. All of the operating budgets are balanced. There is some use of reserves for those, for that infrastructure spending, as well as there's one planned transfer of excess reserves to our new equipment replacement fund. Other than that, this has been posted per all requirements and staff is recommending approval of the budget.
This budget fits in with the board's directive of moderating property tax increases, I believe, where this was a one point. Julie, help me here, one point.
That'll be the next time, but one point four percent is what we're expecting on property taxes.
And in my opening remarks, I was remiss, I did not thank the village board for all the time you guys put into this, most importantly. So thank you for the time and the questions during the budget process.
Any questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's four.
Motion carries, ordinance is passed. Number two is an ordinance adopting the twenty twenty-one tax levy for the Village of Benciville, DuPage and Cook Counties, Cook Counties for the fiscal year. For the fiscal year beginning, beginning January one, twenty twenty-one and ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
You have a motion?
We have a second on the motion.
Second.
Being a motion and a second discussion?
On October twenty-sixth, we had the board approve a tax estimate. This is the same as that text, tax estimate. The levy will be for five million, two fifty-one and forty-seven dollars. It's based on a two point five percent increase of the prior years. That is so that we can capture additional tax revenues on new EAV within the residence, residential area. We expect the actual amount to be somewhere between one point four percent and two point five percent. However, because one point five is, or one point four is our PTEL limit. So it's really going to be closer probably to two percent increase even with the EAV based on this current levy.
Any questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona? Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's four.
Motion carries, ordinance is passed. Number three is an ordinance authorizing the issuance of general obligation limited tax bond series twenty twenty-one B in aggregate principal amount of one million, three hundred forty thousand of the Village of Benciville, DuPage and Cook County, Illinois, for the purpose of providing funds for the construction of certain capital improvements within the village, providing for the levy and collection of the direct annual tax and to pay the principal of and interest on said bonds and authorizing the sale of said bonds to the purchaser thereof. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
You have a motion?
We have a second.
Second.
Being a motion and a second, do we have discussion?
Julie?
On October twenty-sixth, the board considered through a binary, binary hearing the intent to float limited tax bond series twenty twenty-one. Today, bids came in through our financial advisors and new paperwork was given to you based on the results of that, that bidding. First Secure Community Bank came in at point five eight four nine percent, which is much better than we had projected. It will actually, the whole series will actually yield another twenty-seven thousand dollars worth of principal balance due to how low the interest rate came in. The documents in front of you are to approve the final acceptance of that low bid, issue the bonds and proceed with this limited tax bond issue.
It's unbelievable that the rate is point five eight percent, I was joking with Julie, my checking account yields point four, so I mean, pretty incredible, but this is a result of the hard work that the board did to get a credit upgrade. We are, banks want our business, they want to lend to us, so that's, we can pat ourselves on the back for that.
Any other questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's four.
Motion carries and ordinance is passed. Number four is a resolution authorizing a contract with Illinois County's Risk Management Trust and other s- Say that word. Ancillary.
Ancillary.
Ancillary insurance companies for comprehensive liability insurance package effective December first, twenty twenty-one. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
You have a motion.
We have a second on the motion.
Second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
Julie, you wanna go through this process?
Uh, sure.
Discussion.
Sure, I, um, I will actually speak to probably this one and the next one all at this time. Um, due to the way we've been handling claims and the low amount of claims we've had up to this point, we pushed our broker to go ahead and re-quote everything with multiple vendors on the insurance front. Um, ICRMT came back with a quote for the combined workman's comp and liability portion, which saves us in combination a hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars a year. Um, it was really hard to pass up, so staff is recommending that we move from our current carriers to ICRMT for both packages. Um, in addition to that, we've had a little bit of conflict on our cyber policy. Um, the cyber insurance industry has gotten very, very picky. They're looking for us to put some more safeguards in place before we can maintain our traditional limit. So we put a placeholder in, uh, this ordinance to allow the manager to continue to work to get the best deal we can on the cyber, once we put those safeguards in place. That may require an extension of our current insurance to the, the end of December, and then put another one in place. Right now, it's looking like it's gonna cost us in the area of sixteen thousand dollars to do those two things. This has a placeholder for up to twenty-five thousand dollars in it, and the manager will sign that once it's, uh, once it's settled.
It's not often that you get excited about insurance, no offense, Armando, but when you're saving-
It is every day.
When you save this much money, and then what we're learning in the cyber policy realm, um, it's an exciting time for us, but, uh, again, because of our low claim history where people wanna do business with us, and we're, uh, very, very aggressive.
Any questions from the board? Call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's four.
Motion carries and resolution is approved. Resolution authorizing contract with the Illinois County's Risk Management Trust, which is ICRMT, for workers' compensation insurance effective January first, twenty twenty-two to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Is there a motion approving this resolution?
You have a motion?
We have a second.
Second.
Being a motion and a second discussion, which we just did?
Ditto.
Any questions from the board?
That's it.
Call the roll, please.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's four.
Motion carries and resolution is approved. Six is a resolution authorizing the village manager to enter into agreement with endpoint detection and response services not to exceed thirty-five thousand. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion?
We have a second to the motion.
You have a second.
There being a motion and a second discussion?
This is related to the cyber policy insurance requirements. Um, previously, we were cutting edge because we had artificial intelligence providing, uh, antivirus and firewall protection for us. That is no longer sufficient, so this policy is an actual live human that is, uh, contracted out to, um, an EDR provider that was yet to be named, and they are constantly monitoring our system twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred sixty-five days a year. That is expensive, um, but it is super secure. So when something looks funny, they can freeze the system and figure out what, what's going wrong in the system. So it's gonna provide a high level of security to us, and fits with their three-pillar approach of training our employees, having the best technology, which this is, and then having insurance.
Any questions from the board? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's four.
Motion carries and resolution is approved. No report on the police department, and this concludes our meeting. Public Works. Number one, resolution authorizing approval of change order number one, final, with the utility dynamic, Dynamics Incorporated for the twenty twenty-one. CDBG Annual Residential Streetlight Project for a decrease of thirty-three thousand, nine hundred ninety-eight dollars, resulting in a final contract amount of eight hundred five thousand, one hundred sixty dollars. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
There being a motion and a second discussion?
So now that the budget is approved, I get to spend money, but before I do, I wanna give some money back.
You always do that. You load us up with the decreases, and then you hit us with the increases.
Yeah. I'm not gonna balance these out at the end of the day, but, so my first item is a change order for reduction on the twenty twenty-one, uh, streetlight project. Uh, this is a project we installed a hundred and twenty-five streetlights, residential streetlights in the Brentwood area. Utility Dynamics was the contractor. Uh, the contractor's now complete. Uh, final quantities have been agreed upon. The final cost of the project was just under thirty-four thousand dollars, less than the awarded amount. So we come to you today with the recommendation to approve change order number one, final, in that amount to reduce the contract total to eight hundred eight thousand, one hundred sixty dollars, of which two hundred eighty-two thousand of that was funded through the community development block grant. So it is, uh, staff's recommendation to approve.
Discussion. Any questions from the board? Call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's four.
Motion carries, resolution is approved. Number two, resolution authorizing the execution of purchase order to Al Warren Oil Company Incorporated for the, providing fuel, fuel tank rental and fleet fueling services to, in the not to exceed amount of one hundred sixty-eight thousand, two hundred dollars. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
You have a motion.
We have a second.
Second.
Being a motion and a second, any discussion?
So this is our fuel purchase for the year for our vehicles and our diesel-powered generators. Uh, Al Warren Oil has had our contract since twenty twelve. The uniqueness of their contract is that they do lease out their tanks for us, so that we don't have to worry about the insurance and the maintenance of the tanks. We pay OPUS rack rate plus a ten cent upcharge. That ten cent upcharge pays for those tanks, pays for the, uh, uh, the transportation of the fuel, and pays for insurance and things like that through Al Warren Oil. So it's our intent to continue this contract with them. Uh, based on fuel costs these days and our, uh, estimated historical fuel usage, the value of this contract is a hundred sixty-eight thousand, two hundred dollars, which is the amount that we budgeted in the budget for this year. So staff is recommending continuing this relationship with Al Warren Oil.
Questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's four.
Motion carries, resolution is approved. Number three is a resolution authorizing to waive competitive bidding and execute one-year contract extension with Lindahl Brothers Incorporated for stand and stone delivery and debris hauling in the not to exceed amount of eighty-three thousand dollars. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
You have a motion.
We have a second.
Second.
Being a motion and a second discussion?
So this is a, uh, delivery of stone and disposal of spoil contract. Fortunately, we have a supplier right in our backyard, literally. They are right behind Public Works. Uh, Lindahl Brothers has provided this service since twenty-ten. Uh, they have been the successful low bidder in a multiple times that we've gone out to bid. Uh, this year, Lindahl has agreed to raise their prices only half of the CPI index of five point four, so their two point seven percent increase is less than what we would expect on a contract of this nature. Um, the village budget is eighty-three thousand dollars, and that's what we expect the contract value to be. Staff does recommend approval.
Questions from the board? Call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's four.
Motion carries. And the resolution is approved. Sorry about that. Resolu- number four is a resolution authorizing the execution of a contract with Compass Minerals America Incorporated for the purchase of seven hundred and twenty tons of bulk rock salt in a not to exceed amount of forty-seven thousand dollars. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
You have a motion.
We have a second.
Second.
Being a motion and a second, any discussion?
So as you know, we usually secure our salt through two different sources, the state and the county. Uh, we've already approved our county contract. Their price was eighty-one dollars and thirteen cents per ton. Uh, the state, after going out to bid twice on this contract, came back with a price of sixty-two dollars and fifty-eight cents per ton. Um, right now, our salt dome is full, anticipating the upcoming season. This salt will be used to, um, in a heavy season, and then also to replace and replenish our salt dome at the end of the season. So it is staff's recommendation to approve.
Any questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's four.
Motion carries, resolution is approved. Number five is a resolution authorizing the execution of extension number two of a two-year contract with Alexander Chemical Corporation for the purchase and delivery of sodium bisulfate in the not to exceed amount of twelve thousand, four hundred eighty dollars. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
You have a motion.
We have a second.
Second.
Being a motion and a second discussion?
So sodium bisulfate is a neutralizing, neutralizing agent in our wastewater treatment process. Typically, we use about sixty-six, uh, hundred gallons of bisulfate each year. Alexander Chemical was our low bidder in twenty eighteen. We are merely executing the second and the last extension on this contract. Uh, the value of twelve thousand, four hundred eighty dollars, we did budget that much in our upcoming budget, so staff does recommend approval.
Questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's four.
Motion carries and resolution is approved. Six is a resolution authorizing the purchase order to Univar Solutions for the purchase of twelve point five percent sodium hypochlorite and installation of three thousand fifty gallon double wall storage containment in the not to exceed amount of twenty-one thousand, nine hundred sixty buck, dollars, sorry. Is there a motion to approve the resolution? Do I have a second?
Second.
A little comfortable there, sorry. There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
So sodium hypochlorite, this is basically industrial strength bleach. Um, the plant uses about eighteen thousand gallons of bleach each year. This past year, one of our two bleached tanks did spring a leak and was forced to be out of service. Uh, we looked at the cost of replacing that tank. It was in the excess of thirty-five to forty thousand dollars just to replace the tank. So we decided to look a different approach and, you know, follow our fuel purchase, uh, approach. We've asked our, uh, vendors to provide us with a, uh, a proposal to provide us with a tank that they would maintain, own, and we would basically lease. Uh, so Univar Solutions provided us with a new tank and pro- provided us with delivery at the best cost of the two that we secured. Um, the value of the contract is gonna be about twenty-two thousand dollars this year. Again, that will include the installation of a new tank for us in the future. Uh, staff does recommend approval.
Questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's four.
Motion carries and resolution is approved. Seven is a resolution authorizing the execution of extension number two of a two-year contract with Alexander Chemical Corporation for the purchase and delivery of aluminum sulfate in the not to exceed amount of nineteen thousand dollars. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
You have a motion.
We have a second.
Second.
Being a motion and a second, do we have a discussion?
So alum, as it's called, is a coagulant that, uh, is used in our wastewater process. Again, we use about sixty-six hundred gallons of alum each year. Alexander Chemical provided the lowest bid in twenty eighteen. This is merely the second and last extension on this contract. Uh, the value of the contract is nineteen thousand dollars. We budgeted twenty for the year, so staff does recommend approval.
Questions from the board? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's four.
Motion carries, resolution is approved. Resolution, uh, number eight is a resolution authorizing a two-year contract with Suburban Laboratories Incorporated for the wastewater sampling and analysis services in the not to exceed amount of one hundred thirteen thousand, three hundred ninety-four dollars. Motion to approve this resolution?
You have a motion.
Second.
Second.
Being a motion and a second, do we have a discussion?
So lab testing is a critical component of our wastewater treatment requirements, as well as our pretreatment requirements. Uh, this year, we did go out to bid for a new contract lab. Uh, Suburban Lab submitted the lowest of two bids in the amount of a hundred and thirteen thousand, three hundred ninety-four dollars. This is a two-year contract, so annually, that's just under fifty-seven thousand dollars per year. Uh, we've worked with Suburban Labs in the past. Uh, they are currently doing our water lab testing, so they'll switch back into doing our wastewater testing as well. Uh, the village did budget seventy-five thousand dollars per year for this, uh, contract, so it's well within the budgeted amount, and staff does recommend approval.
Any questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's four.
Motion carries and the resolution is approved. Number nine, resolution authorizing the execution of an engineering services agreement with Baxter and Woodman consulting engineerings, engineers for the twenty twenty-two pretreatment program assistance in the not to exceed amount of one hundred twenty thousand dollars. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Being a motion and a second, any discussion?
So the village is mandated by the US EPA to implement and manage both an industrial pretreatment program and an industrial surcharge program. Uh, the programs, in essence, monitor, control, and manage our wastewater discharge that comes to our plant from our industrial users. Baxter and Woodman has been assisting the village with these responsibilities since two thousand and three. Uh, Baxter and Woodman submitted a proposal to perform the required management in the, in the amount of about ninety-five thousand dollars, and then we also asked them to provide us with a couple of additional scope items, uh, that will be, uh, executed upon our direction in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars for a total contract value of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. The cost to manage this program is paid by our industrial users, so this is not taxpayer money or water sewer rate money that goes into them. It's a direct pass-through from our industrial, um, suppliers. Uh, we did budget a hundred ninety thousand dollars this year, so it is well within our budget, and staff does recommend approval.
Questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's four.
Motion carries and the resolution is approved. Number ten, is a resolution authorizing the execution of a year of of a four-year out of, wait.
Year four of four.
Year four.
Year four out of four years, sorry, it's written wrong, contract with Winkler's Tree Service Incorporated for twenty twenty-two Parkway Tree Pruning Program in the not to exceed amount of thirty-nine thousand, four hundred sixty-two dollars. Is there a motion to approve the resolution? We have a second.
Second.
Being a motion and a second, do we have a discussion?
So the village prunes our trees, our Parkway trees, on a four-year rotating cycle, so twenty twenty-two marks the last of our current four-year cycle and contract with Winkler Tree Services, so we will be going back out to bid on this, uh, program next year. Uh, this year, we're gonna be doing Maintenance Zone Five, which is basically our south portion of town, anything south of Jefferson or Red Oak. Uh, we have, um, a value of the contract for this year is thirty-nine thousand, four hundred and sixty-three dollars. We did budget forty thousand, so we're within our budget, and staff does recommend approval of this last year contract.
Questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's four.
Motion carries and the resolution is approved. Number eleven is a resolution to obtain permits to authorize the village of Bensville to perform work on state highways. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
You have a motion.
We have a second.
Second.
Being a motion and a second, do we have a discussion?
So the village is required to pass a resolution every two years to obtain it, kind of a blanket permit to perform work on state highways. We do have Route eighty-three and, uh, Irving Park Road as state highways through town. Um, instead of filing out individual applications for permits every time we have to dig in the roadway, this, uh, resolution will actually serve as our blanket permit. Um, we're basically agreeing to perform the work in good faith and restoring it to the state standards, uh, which, again, is a typical every other year, a biannual, uh, resolution that we approve. So staff does recommend approval.
Questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's four.
Motion carries and the resolution is approved. Number twelve is a resolution authorizing the execution of supplemental statement scope of work with munis- municipal GIS Partners Incorporated for the twenty twenty-two calendar year not to exceed amount of eighty-five thousand, six hundred fifteen dollars. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
You have a motion.
We have a second.
Second.
Being a motion and a second, do we have a discussion?
So the village staff in multiple departments utilizes GIS platform on a daily basis to obtain data on our residents and our infrastructure. Uh, the village joined the GIS consortium in two thousand and fifteen, uh, which consists of nearly forty communities in the Chicagoland area, all putting our ideas and our information together for the benefit and to find good GIS solutions for everybody. Um, MGP, Municipal GIS Partners, has been providing the staffing services and the bulk of the work for the consortium since its inception. Um, before tonight's, our annual agreement and our annual scope of work to be performed in twenty twenty-two. Uh, they provide the village with a GIS specialist two days per week and ongoing continuous support as needed. Uh, they provide the village with a GIS specialist two days per week and ongoing continuous support as needed. Uh, the value of the contract is eighty-five thousand six hundred and fifteen dollars, which is what we budgeted for in the recently approved budget, so staff does recommend approval.
Any questions from the board? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's four.
Motion carries and the resolution is approved. Thirteen is a resolution authorizing the execution of extension number two of the two-year contract with Best Quality Cleaning Incorporated for janitorial services at the police and emergency management headquarters, and then not-to-exceed amount of twenty-seven thousand dollars. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Being a motion and a second, discussion, please?
Uh, the village contracts janitorial services for the police department. Best quality cleaning provided the lowest bid back in two thousand eighteen. Again, this is the second and last execution of an extension on this contract. The value is twenty-seven thousand dollars, which is the number that was budgeted in the police budget this year, so staff does recommend approval.
Questions from the board? Call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's four.
Motion carries and the resolution is approved. Fourteen is a resolution authorizing the two thousand twenty-two approved vendor list for village departments utilizing parts, equipment, and services. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Being a motion and a second, any discussion?
So state statute requires that any purchase or project in excess of twenty-five thousand dollars be formally bid and approved by the governing body. Um, the village's purchasing policy is more restrictive and limits our purchases to ten thousand dollars. A lot of times, though, the spending that we do is not for one specific project, but it's for buying materials throughout the year that not one time can be over ten thousand dollars, but in a combination can be over ten thousand dollars. So, the village has recently started to provide this with you as a transparency resolution. These are vendors that we intend to use that, again, we won't necessarily spend any one item over ten thousand dollars, but in conjunction over the year may exceed one thou, or ten thousand dollars. Uh, we're still going to follow all of our procurement policies. We still have to go through all of our checks and balances. Anything over ten thousand dollars still will come to the village board, um, but this is a list of, of vendors that we anticipate we will use and their anticipated values. So staff does recommend approval.
So does that mean that, uh, that, that there's several that are in that one, in each one of these that we see on here?
Yeah, there's, yeah, there are several.
Several, uh, vendors that are in one, like the McMaster car, I mean, I see is fifteen thousand dollars.
Right, that's, we expect that between the McMaster car, Public Works, Police, and CDB, you may spend, those different departments may spend up to fifteen thousand dollars throughout the year, but it's not going to be a single purchase, it's going to get, uh,
It's got to get there. Got it, okay, that's what I, I just didn't-
McMaster car is a perfect example. We buy parts weekly from McMaster car. That might be a hundred-dollar part today, a three-hundred-dollar part tomorrow. They're all for different things that we do, but at the end of the year, you may see the vendor exceed fifteen thousand dollars in, uh, combined purchases.
Okay. That's what I didn't understand. It's a good question.
Any other questions from the board? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's four.
Motion carries and the resolution is approved. Fifteen is a resolution endorsing the two thousand twenty-one Climate Action Plan for the Chicago region. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
Being a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
So earlier this year, the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus launched the two thousand twenty-one Climate Action Plan for the Chicago region. Um, this plan outlines a bunch of science-based goals and objectives for the region. Um, identifies strategies for municipalities to take, uh, in order to reduce greenhouse gases, to, uh, try to re, reduce our reliance on climate-related hazards and things of that nature. Um, the plan is very scientific, it's very detailed, it's very long, uh, but it's, in its simplest form, is really a manual for us to follow to try our best to reduce climate change. Um, as stewards of our environment and our village, staff does recommend endorsing the plan and working hard to play a part in reducing the change for the future, and that is seventeen items in seventeen minutes. Thank you.
Any questions from the board? No questions from the board, call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
Motion carries, resolution is approved. Joe? Thank you. On to my man in recreation. Resolution approving a facility use agreement with Goodman Training LLC. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Being a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
Yes, I'll do my best not to take up seventeen minutes with one. So, a little background here, um, Goodman Elite Training, uh, LLC works with the Chicago Blues Hockey Club, a new partnership they put together this past year. Paul Goodman and his wife Susan, uh, run the program. Paul is the strength and conditioning coach for the Chicago Blackhawks. They approached us about putting a, um, training center inside the Edge Ice Arena. We had, uh, two rooms, our wellness room and our weight room, that basically have been sitting dormant for the last four years, just used as, uh, storage purposes. Um, and we've entered into a five-year, uh, agreement with them. Us make a little bit of revenue, let them make a little bit of revenue as well, um, all with the purpose of training, uh, youth hockey players, uh, adults, uh, sports performance, and we're very excited about it.
Any questions from the board?
This fits well in with our goal of being a amateur sports hub, um, as well as, they've also extended some ancillary benefits to, uh, village of Benciville employees for discounted rates.
Nice, awesome.
Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's four.
Motion carries and the resolution is approved. All right, on, on to, uh, presidential remarks.
Mr. Mayor, can I just do the village manager stuff first, because I don't want to follow you up?
Go ahead.
All right, uh, really boring stuff. Uh, as we all noticed, the leaves have not fallen off the tree. Um, so we're, and our yard waste pickup is supposed to end at the end of November. Joe has executed an agreement with Republic Service to pick up leaves through the third week in December, so the leaf pickup will be December first, December eighth, and the fifteenth. That concludes the village manager's report.
Do you have a attorney's report?
I have your own report, sorry.
All right, on to the presidential remarks. Uh, first, next, uh, on Sunday, the twenty-first, is our holiday magic, right downtown here in Benciville. Uh, it starts at five PM. Uh, we have a lot planned in social distancing and COVID-related stuff. Keeping that in mind, we're going to try to do our best. I believe we have fireworks this year for the first time ever.
Yay.
Um, so hopefully see you guys all, um, down there on the twenty-first. Onto, uh, something other, uh, some other news. Many of, I don't know if many of you know this, but, uh, the first weekend of this month, uh, we had one of our police officers shot in the line of duty. Uh, Officer Steven Kadeluski was, uh, shot in the line of duty without giving a lot of information. He was hit multiple times. He has currently, uh, undergone multiple surgeries. Uh, he is currently still in the hospital, and first and foremost, this community has been phenomenal with the response to this. Facebook messages have been great. Uh, community involvement has been great.